I'll stand for President's Legion Invocation by Counselor Adams.
Lord, we are meeting tonight to conduct matters of government business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance tonight. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will have the clerk call roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Is there any amendment, any amendment to the agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
Want to replace 17014 with the new copy from our agenda, and there will be no report of officials.
Second.
Thank you. Resolution 414, 414.
You need to.
We need a vote.
Just all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay. Resolution 1414.
Memorializing the late Henrietta Spencer, outstanding Lima citizen, and extending condolences to her family on behalf of the Lima City Council.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that resolution number 14-14 be adopted on its first reading after having been read.
Second.
It been moved and second that resolution 1414 be adopted on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
I'll read the resolution now.
Okay.
Whereas on May 24th, 2014, the entire Lima community was saddened by the death of Henrietta Spencer, whose many contributions have and will continue to affect the Lima land community. And whereas Henrietta was a 1941 graduate of Marcellus High School, and in 1942 she graduated from Northwestern Business School in Lima. In 1978, she retired from Superior Coach, Shelworth Globe, where she had worked as a timekeeper for 34 years. And whereas, Henrietta's dedication to the Lima community was evident by her involvement as a 50-year member of the Ida Rebecca Lodge, number 391, charter member of Lima White Shrine of Jerusalem, number 20, and Trinity Chapter, number 16, Order of Eastern Star, member of the Lima Chapter of the DAR, Lima Memorial Health Systems Auxiliary, and Lima Senior Systems. And whereas Henrietta was well-known to the Lima City Council because she attended almost every Lima City Council meeting for years, she loved the Lima community and remained actively involved until her passing. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Lima, Ohio, that the Lima City Council hereby acknowledges the many contributions of Henrietta Spencer to the Lima community, which have and will continue to benefit our community, and that the Council on behalf of the entire community expresses its condolences to her family and friends.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
First of all, I'd like to thank Council for approving this resolution. I had asked that one be prepared. She lived in my ward, the 5th Ward, and upon obtaining this seat, she was one of my, if not the first call I received. And she lived on Michael's Avenue, longtime resident, loved that area, loved Cook Park, and her first request for me was to see about getting signs made up so that those traveling Michael's Avenue could see that they were entering an area that had a park. So the signs that are currently at the two entrances off of Michael's, it says Cook Park with an arrow, was her suggestion because of the children running and playing. She was concerned for their safety. And she was pleased when those signs went up. She would call me sometimes with the street light out, other concerns, and as the resolution stated, she was always a presence here at City Council, sometimes more than some counselors in administration. She was sitting here. And when she wasn't able to come, she watched on television. She said she kinda liked that because she could turn it up and hear everybody. And plus, it kept her off the icy streets and stuff. But she was a great woman, a great influence on me, and she will be sadly missed. And again, thank you. And, Mr. President, there are some family members present.
Okay. I have a couple of things to say about her. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
To the family, I never knew Ms. Henrietta's name. I always said the nice lady. When I, when I first started Council, she was having some trouble getting in her car one evening after Council. And I helped her in her car, and I asked her, did she have any advice for me? And she kinda grinned, and she looked at me, and she said, "Don't get old."
Sounds like her.
Yeah. And she goes, this, she said, "Oh, oh, you're talking about Council?" I'm like, "Yes." And she said, "Just, just tell the truth, and you'll be fine."
That's right.
"Just tell the truth, and you'll be fine." So I just want to say, I appreciate that. And in the situation, her name wasn't important, but her encouragement was. So I thank you for that.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I met her here at Council also. She always had questions for me. She always wanted to know when I got my new calendars in. She got those stickies, the sticker ones that stick on. She came and get like 50 of them. She gave them to her friends because they always liked to put them on their refrigerator. And I never knew her last name. I always knew her as Henrietta. But she was very, very nice and knowledgeable and very sharp until, just until before she passed. She got a little bit, you could tell that it was, you know, she couldn't come in, she couldn't sit, she wasn't comfortable, she couldn't get out of her car. And I missed her because of that, because she always asked questions. She was a, I mean, she asked questions. She came in my office and sat with me for a couple hours sometimes, asking me questions. So I'll miss her, do miss her, and I know you will too. So thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
You know, what's interesting is when, especially after you've been on Council for a while, there are the regulars that you'll see, and they're very few and far between. When I started Council, John Keller would be here, and Henrietta is one of those that was a regular at the City Council meetings, and, and as Jesse said, was just a very pleasant person. But it's so great to see someone maintain that interest in their community, want to make their community a better place. So she will be missed. I would encourage others to become as active as she did. It's a good thing, good thing for our community. And my condolences to the family. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I got to know her at City Council, and I was very happy when I seen her came to my wedding. And she came, and she's out in the car, and she was telling someone, "Tell Gary Glenn to come outside." And I'm at the reception and everything, and I went outside, and she gave me a gift. Like, "Thank you," she said. "I don't, I can't come in right now." But that made, that made my day. And, and I mean, she was so nice. And one time she had, it was so cold outside, her car door would not open. And she didn't care what the weather was at City Council. If City Council's going on, she gonna try to be there. And at the time, Officer, he's a lieutenant now, but he came up to her, he gave her a ride home. Because I was on, we had executive session, I couldn't hear her home. She was like, "You can sit out here." She said, "Well, I'll sit out and wait for you." But he gave her a ride home. And she was telling me about how she rode in the cruiser and, but, you know, she just kept coming to City Council, no matter, you know, until she got a little, under weather a little bit. But like she says, she did on TV, always had kind words to say to you, you know. And I know all the councils that got to know her, she never had nothing negative to say about Lima or that negative we doing here at City Council. So she really gonna be missed. And I know Ms. Adams gonna miss someone really good in her ward, but she was that type of person, okay? She loved the 5th Ward, and she always talked about the Cook Park. That's it. Thank you. Can I have clerk call roll?
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes. 7-0, 7-0 vote. And could we have Mr. Smerser come up, please? Have a couple words to say.
Thank you much.
You vote.
Appreciate the honor.
Thank you. Papers of the 4th floor, Tim Guthridge. He has three minutes.
Tim Guthrie, Lima, Ohio. Glad to be here, and I hope these three minutes aren't as short as John Nixon's three minutes. Now, Sam, I'm glad to hear you say that you like people to come into your shop and talk to you, because I plan on coming in and talk, and maybe this time you'll answer some of my questions. What do you think, Sam? And it's too bad my two main guys aren't here tonight. I really miss them. So this is kinda like a dry run. I'll be back in two more weeks if they're here. And you know what I'm here for. Last term, Berger made $460,000 as mayor for four years. This year, it's $518,000. So that's an increase of $58,000 over the last term. Divide that by four, for his four years, that's a $14,500 a year raise. Now, do you know anybody in the private sector that's getting a $14,500 a year raise in Lima? Dave Berger said he created 22,000 jobs since 1994. Do you think any of those people are getting a $14,500 raise? No. Now, the next term, it goes up to $583,000. Dave Berger's one, whoever's mayor is gonna be making $583,000. And that man right there gave me all my figures. He, he said they was good. I did the math. He wrote, I wrote down for each year, and he said they're good. So this is good. So that's $65,000 more than this term. 65 more than this term. That's $16,250 for each year that year. I want some answers, City Council. You got the purse strings, five people. Sam, you used to tell me, five people to change it, didn't you? Where you at on that now?
Still takes the same.
No, you don't. I don't hear you speaking out. The next term after that is 657 for four years. That's another $74,000.
Guthrie, three minutes left.
Done?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's an $18,500 for four years. And you guys think about it, because I'll be back in two weeks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Consent calendar.
Mr. President, I move that Item A of the consent calendar be received, filed and approved, and Item B and C be received and filed. Second.
The motion is received. Item A, and received and filed. Approve Item B and C. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication.
Number one, from the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number one be received and filed, and legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second. Has been moved and second that communication number one be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Communication number two, from the Director of Community Development regarding legislation for the CDBG slash Home Action Plan for 2014-15.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number two be received and filed, and legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
It been moved, it been moved and second that communication number two be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication number three.
From the Director of Finance regarding legislation for a payment to the home fund.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number three be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
It been moved and second that communication number three received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication number four.
From the Data Systems Manager requesting permission to dispossess all computer equipment.
Mr. President.
Ms. Miles.
I move that communication number four be received and filed.
Second.
It been moved and second that communication number four received and filed. Is there any discussion?
We need legislation.
Need legislation?
I request that the necessary legislation be prepared.
Who take the second back?
Second.
Okay. It been moved and second that communication number four received and filed. Is there any All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication number five.
From Board of Adjustment granting a special use permit.
Mr. President.
Ms. Miles.
I move that communication number five be received and filed, with any necessary legislation be prepared.
Second.
It been moved and second that communication number five be received and filed. Is there any discussion?
We don't need legislation for that. Sorry.
All right.
Take that second back.
Second.
Okay. Okay. It been moved and second, communication number five received and filed. There is no, any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication number six.
Mr. President. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, from Board of Adjustment granting the zoning variance.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
It been moved and second that communication number six received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication, communication number seven.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to accept properties from the A.R. Hale Family Foundation.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed, and that the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
It been moved and second that communication number seven be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to acquire four parcels of land contiguous to Lima Stadium.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed, and the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second.
It been, it been moved and second that communication number eight be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication number nine.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to enter into an agreement with Lima School District Board of Education.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed, and the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second.
It been moved and second that Counselor, that communication number nine be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to accept and expend capital improvement dollars.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed, and that the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second.
It been moved, has had been moved and second that communication number 10 be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication number 11.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to receive and expend funds through AEP Ohio Energy Savings Program.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number 11 be received and filed, and that the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second.
It been moved and second that communication number 11 be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication number 12.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to enter into a contract with left and paid being.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number 12 be received and filed, and the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second.
Has had been moved and second that communication number 12 be received and filed. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I just wanted to note that on the back of the communication was a list of the streets, and I took time, of course, to look at those and saw a few in there of the 5th Ward, and I just wanted to say thank you. And hopefully, next year we'll receive more money and be able to do larger sections. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Yes. I just wanted to be noted in the minutes that I have requested for Pennsylvania Avenue, that 500 block of Pennsylvania Avenue, to be repaved several times, and it is actually less than some of these other areas, and it was not considered. But I would like to have that in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication number 13.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to submit a grant application to the Ohio EPA.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number 13 be received and filed, and the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second.
Has had been moved and second that communication number 13 be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication number 14.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to enter into an agreement with EFE Engineering.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number 16, or 15, or excuse me, 14 be received and filed, and the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second.
It been moved and second that communication number 14 be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Communication number 15.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to approve minutes of the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number 15 be received and filed, and legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Has had been moved and second that communication number 15 be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Petitions.
An alley vacation in the 1,000 block of West Elm Street petitioned for by William and Marcia Mann.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that the petition be received and filed, that the law director prepare the necessary legislation, that the clerk cause publication of the legal act and notify abutting property owners of the public hearing to be held on September 8th, 2014 at 7:00 P.M.
Second.
Has had been moved and second, as stated by Mr. Tevin. Is there any discussion? Motion carried. All the, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay. Ordis.
Ordinance 16514, authorizing Mayor Tanner to a professional services agreement with Black and D-Tech Corporation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 16514 be passed on its first reading. Second.
It been moved and second that ordinance 16514 be passed on the first reading. Is there any discussion? I will have the clerk call roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mr. My, Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Your husband's not here.
No.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Motion carried with the 8-0 vote.
Seven.
Seven, 7-0 vote. Yeah, that's okay, I got it.
Okay, 16614, authorizing Mayor Tanner to efficient agreements with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 16614 be passed on its first reading. Second.
It been moved and second that ordinance 16614 be passed on the first reading. Is there any discussion? I will have the clerk call roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0 vote. 16814.
Authorizing approval of minutes from the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance number 167-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
Has had been moved and second that ordinance 16714 be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0 vote. 16814.
Authorizing approval of minutes from the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 16814 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
It been moved and second that ordinance 16414 be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I will have the clerk call roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Motion carried with the 7-0 vote. 16914.
Leaving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 16914 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
It been moved and second that ordinance 16914 be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I will have the clerk call roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0, 7-0 vote. 17014.
Authorizing the order to make payment to home fund 3400 account.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that ordinance 17014 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
It been moved and second that ordinance 17014 be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I will have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
17114.
Adopting the 20,000, 2014-15 annual update to the Lima Consolidated Plan and authorizing submission thereof to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 17114 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
It has been moved, and second, that ordinance 17114 be passed on its first, be passed on its first reading. If there is any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I would like to thank Ms. Odom and her department, uh, the committee that Counselor Glenn chairs. Um, it's a, um, long process, um, in meetings and prior to the committee getting it, and a lot of monitoring, uh, afterwards. Uh, it was a healthy discussion this year, I think, by all council members as well, and input, and, um, hopefully, these additional agencies that council has, um, allocated funds for, um, will hopefully give us some encouraging reports in the coming months. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Adams. I'd like to say a couple of things, though, but I appreciate the committee there, uh, that helped out. I know we did it a different way there, but we try to get more peoples involved. And this time of the year, some, a lot of, some folks not happy about some of the way it went on. But I appreciate council, though. Uh, council came out and, and, you know, helped out a lot. And, uh, uh, Mr. Low didn't know that a lot of stuff he had put together there, uh, uh, some, uh, young lady had talked to me about, they appreciate what he did to the parks. The parks got money. And, uh, and, uh, for the first time in a long time, we see the parks got money. But it's well needed, though. But I appreciate Amy and, and I know, in my wish, I can give everyone in need money. I'm telling them, you just don't understand. I wish I could wave a one and say, here you go, but it don't work that way. You know, but I will work hard and help other ones out who did not get the money and try to find ways and resolution to find ways to helping them out the best we can. It's just a small pot. And I know, I, I was looking at how we get, and some cities don't, don't even get them out of money. We get, they smaller than us, and some of them, they're oversized than us. And they, we didn't, they wasn't eligible for the money. And we've been blessed that we've been getting the money, knowing that our population been going down. Hope that we get it again next year, 'cause it's not guaranteed to us. But it been real good for our community, though. Thank you, uh. Clerk call roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon? Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Seven oh. Motion pass. Ms. Lee Business. Council Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, can't believe I'm the first one, and I have nothing tonight.
Oh, my goodness. Caught you off guard, didn't it?
I have, I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Adams. Council Miles?
Uh, only one thing here. I would like to refer the 15 and 1600 block of West Wayne to the Traffic, uh, Commission for consideration of only allowing parking on one side.
Second.
It was second, uh, to send to the Traffic Commission. 15, you said, 15.
15, 1600 block of West Wayne.
1500 block of West Wayne.
15 through 1600.
15 through 1600, West, West Wayne. Make a motion?
She made the motion.
She made the motion already. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay. Motion pass. Great. That's a good idea there. Okay. Mr. Gordon.
Um, the only thing I have is remind people to be good to each other. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. McLean?
Well, I want to say, uh, Mr. President, that you did a fine job stepping in there tonight. And no kidding aside, we wanted to make you laugh a couple times. You did a great job.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else to say other than that, so you did a good job, my friend.
Mr. Low?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to put, uh, another issue in Traffic Commission. I would like to, uh, the issue of a four-way stop at Perry and Market and/or Dewey and Market.
Second.
The motion was to put, uh, place Perry.
Four-way stop.
Four-way stop.
And/or Dewey and Market.
And/or Dewey and Market.
Yes. Okay. And also, um,
Let's vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?